I'd like to call it order, the Town and Court of Madera Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. Would everybody please join me for the salute to the flag?
A bunch of units to the flag, the United States, to the Republic, where this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would staff please do a roll call?
Commissioner Bandell?
Here.
Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
And Commissioner Bishoyer?
Here.
And Vice Chair Rizzo?
Here.
And Chair Chase is absent this evening.
All right, at this time in the meeting, I'd like to open up the meeting to public comment for anything that might not be on our agenda this evening. Any participants have three minutes to say whatever they'd like to say? Do we have anybody that would like to speak?
No hands raised online, and it doesn't look like we've received any emails to public comment either.
Okay. I guess we're going to move on. There's nothing on our consent calendar, and there's no continued hearings, so we're going to move on to new hearings. And our first item is Item 5A, Design Review Application PL 25-0017 for a 592 square-foot second-story addition to an existing single-story home at 13 Pacific Queen Passage, including a conversion of the existing garage into living space and the construction of a new 348-square-foot attached two-car garage. I believe this item is going to be presented by Tracy. Tracy, would you like to present?
Yes, thank you, thank you, commissioners. Good evening. As Jim said, the applicant is requesting approval of a design review application for additions, first story and a new second story at 13 Pacific Queen Passage. Next slide, please. This slide is showing the project site again, 13 Pacific Queen Passage. It's situated on the east side of the street in the Mariner Cove neighborhood and is surrounded by other single-family homes. The parcel is 6,000 square feet in area, which is 1,500 square feet less than the standard lot size in R1 of 7,500 square feet. However, a 60 by 100 or 6,000 square-foot parcel is commonplace in the neighborhood. Similar to other parcels in the vicinity, the project site has a uniform rectangular shape and it's flat. The project site is situated outside of the FEMA special flood hazard area or flood zone, and therefore, the finished floor of the home does not need to be raised with this project. And you may note that the Public Works Department conditions of approval do not require a substantial improvement calculation, nor do they require a floodplain development permit since it's not in the flood zone. Next slide, please. This is showing the existing conditions. The lot is developed with a 1,381-square-foot single-story residence and an attached two-car garage. It was constructed in 1958 as a three-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-story home. Slide, please. It's zoned R1 medium-density residential. This slide shows existing proposed and required development standards. The proposed second-story addition and the additions to the first floor meet all R1 development standards, including setbacks, lot coverage, floor area, height, and parking. I'll just linger here for a second if anybody has a minute to look through this. To the next slide, thank you. The project, as you know, is a 592-square-foot second-story addition to the single-story home. The footprint of the second story is shown in a red outline on this slide. The existing 499-square-foot garage is positioned further back on the lot on the first story. It's about 43 feet from the front property line. It's going to be converted to living space and a new 348-square-foot attached garage, which is also two-car, is proposed in front of or just west of the former garage. And that addition of the new garage is shown in a blue outline on this slide. The green lines on the slide indicate where a new roof ridge for the first story will be located, increasing the ridge height slightly at the middle of the building and then at the rear of the building on the first floor, adding a gable end to the lower-story roofline. The proposed second-story addition is positioned to the south end of the first story and is recessed from the first story on all sides. At its closest point, it'll be seven feet, six inches to the south side property line, where five feet is required. The new attached garage is set back five feet from the south side property line, where five feet, again, is required, and it's 26 and a half feet from the front property line, where 15 feet is required. Slide, please. This is showing the existing first-floor plan. At the first floor, the two-car garage, kind of to the right edge of the screen, will be converted to living area to allow for the remodel and expansion of the living room, dining room, and kitchen. Next slide, please. This slide is showing the new first-floor plan with the blue outline as indicating the area of addition to this floor. Total additions to the first floor are 424 square feet, and consists of the new 348-square-foot garage at the front of the former garage. And this new garage contains two compliant parking spaces. It also includes, at the first-floor additions, a new 76-square-foot addition to create a front entry to the first story, as well as a front porch in front of that. Next slide is showing the proposed second floor. Again, 592 square feet. It adds a new primary suite, which consists of the primary bedroom, primary bathroom, and a closet, as well as an office. The total floor area for the home is going to increase by 1,016 square feet to a total of 2,896 square feet. And on the next slide, I'll take you through some of the elevations. This is the front elevation of the home facing west towards Pacific Queen Passage. The second-story addition again is placed above the existing garage, which is converted to living space, and the proposed new garage. It's stepped back from the existing first-story wall plane on all sides. The design of the second story has two gabled roof sections. The second-story gable in the foreground is 21 feet, nine inches in height, which is one foot, nine inches lower than the peak of the upper gable behind it, which is 23 feet, six inches. Maximum allowed height in the zone is 30 feet, and the existing home is 15 feet maximum height. On the next slide is the south elevation, faces the side yard and the neighboring property at 9 Pacific Queen Passage. The first-story garage addition extends the building west in the front of the home towards the front property line. New first-floor windows are proposed at the kitchen and the garage on the first level, and a new solid wood door to the side yard is also proposed off the garage. Above the garage, the second-story addition steps back from the first-story wall plane by two and a half feet. It includes one window at the upper floor facing the side property line. This window is located at the top of the new stairs, stairwell. The next slide is the east elevation facing the rear yard. The ridge of the second-story addition is perpendicular to the main ridge of the home. The design on the second story on the east is similar to that of the west elevation with two different gabled roof sections. One window is proposed on the rear elevation of the second story, and that is the office window. There's a change to the lower-floor roofline on the side. It would change to a gabled roof to more closely match the rooflines of the second story. Additionally, folding glass doors will be installed at the back of the first floor to provide access from the remodeled areas to the yard. The home is set back 28 feet, nine inches from the rear property line today, and it would not change with this project. The required rear yard setback is 25 feet. And the next slide is the north elevation facing the side yard and the neighboring property at 17 Pacific Queen Passage. The second-story addition is kind of in the background of the proposed elevation. It's 24 feet, eight inches from the second-story addition to the existing north facade of the home. There's one window in the corner of the primary bedroom on the north elevation that will be visible from the side. Story poles have been installed at the project site since June 20th, and public comment has not been received and concerns have not been raised from any neighbors since story pole installation or during the notice period. The next slide shows the proposed colors and materials. The existing stucco finish on the home would be repainted in the frost line, kind of a cool wintery white. There's a materials samples on the dais for your inspection. And with this project, the windows that are proposed would be Milgard windows with black trim, and the white and black combination is very popular amongst recent home remodels that we've seen in Corte Madera. Roofing materials will use gray composition shingle, and there are existing solar panels on the home that would be relocated once the second story is constructed. Staff is recommending approval of this application. An analysis of all the design review findings are included in the resolution, which is Attachment 1 to your staff report. I'm available for any questions. The project architect is here, as well as the property owner, if you have questions for them, and I think they'd like to say a few words at the appropriate time. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Tracy. I'd like to ask any of the commissioners if they have any questions for staff this time. Valerie, can we start with you?
Sure, thank you, Jim. I just have one question, well, actually two. Do you mind, Tracy, going back to the site plan on the screen? Just a small clarification. One sec. Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, so the drawings are showing 26 and a half to, not to the blue line, they're showing it's the dimension to the roof line, it seems like. Is that just a discrepancy graphically, or because your blue outline is showing it a little bit further?
The blue outline is supposed to be showing the distance from the wall of the first-story addition to the front property line.
All right, but the dimension that architect has provided seems to be showing 26 and six to the roof line on this particular site plan?
It's the architect's drawing, we're looking at Sheet A1, Drawing 1, is showing 26 feet, six inches to the wall of the first.
Okay, so it's just on this site plan, is a discrepancy, all right. Do you see what I'm saying? Or, yes, it just shows the dimension line here to the roof and not to the.
The architect clarified that when she's up, what the distance from the first-story addition to the front property line is.
All right, okay, and then I just have one question for you guys. In terms of the FEMA flood zone, I understand that the project is not on the flood zone, but have we considered, based on the Corte Madera Climate Action Plan, that there is a sea-level rise vulnerability for Marina Cove? And is there any overlay, resilience overlay that should be happening with these sites in particular, in general, not just this home, but in all of the sites that not technically considered to be in FEMA zone, but still are vulnerable to the sea-level rise?
Right now, there's the regulations that require someone to take into consideration raising their home with any project voluntarily or when it's required by the town. You have to be in the special flood hazard area, Zone AE, and that comes from FEMA. And then it's the town's regulations that do a lookback of five years for those properties to add up the total projects and then determine whether or not a project is a substantial improvement. And if the house is not in the flood zone, we can't require that. This house probably was even further from the flood zone in 2016. 2016 is when FEMA raised base flood elevation from nine to 10. So do we think they may do that again? I don't know, but I think that that's possible. And then at that point, this house would be mapped into the flood zone most likely, and then we would be able to apply those regulations to it. I'm not, maybe Amy can speak to whether there's any plans for an overlay, but at this time, there's not any regulations we could apply to this property that would require them to do that, and they could voluntarily, however, decide to floodproof proactively.
Yeah, it's a good question. Climate Action Plan really just sets forward an implementation plan, and the regulations for the FEMA lifts are separate. And FEMA does periodically review the flood mapping, usually every five to 10 years, so we would be subject to that in a few years. And at that point in time, there would be a review of what the appropriate flood elevation is, and the regulations may change, more area may be added to the flood zone, or elevations within the flood zone may change. But at this point in time, there's nothing new that would require anything of this home.
Understood, thank you.
So for clarity, they don't need to be at the base flood elevation of 10 feet or even be required to be surveyed?
Correct.
Per code, okay.
Right, thank you, I have no more questions.
Thank you, Valerie. Daniel?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Could you elaborate on the 6,000-square-foot lot in R1 zone that requires 7,500 square feet in terms of how many homes in this neighborhood, or what percentage approximately of the lots are in that situation? And whether that's ever been any issue relative to permitting additional square footage?
If we look at the vicinity map, it's a little bit small to tell, but almost every lot in the blocks surrounding this one are 6,000 square feet until you get sort of up to the corners where they wedge out and they get a little larger. So there's a lot in Mariner Cove that are 6,000 square feet, there's a lot in Madera Gardens that are also 60 by 100 in the lower numbers of Mohawk and Lakeside Drive. And it was a common way that the subdivider at that time, creating those late 50s subdivisions of Mariner Cove and Marina Village and Madera Gardens, were creating lots of that size. For whatever reason, maybe they thought they'd be entry homes, and then as you get later to Marina Estates and whatnot, you're getting larger lots with those subdivisions. It hasn't, I think you asked if it caused zoning non-conformance, I think, is that your question? And these houses, they do fit on these properties. They are able to expand them laterally and vertically in compliance with our code. And as you can see with this project, it hasn't led us, led them to request any variances, and they still are able to propose a project that.
So we don't consider them non-conforming?
They would be non-conforming according to current regulations. And it's, that's, there are many ways that we've changed our code to require a large lot size, or we've changed our code to require two parking spaces and homes have one, so we have that commonly throughout our residential zoning districts.
So we, and taking action, we don't have to make any reference to the fact this is a non-conforming lot?
No.
Okay. Do you know whether the proposal is in compliance with the local reach codes for appliances and mechanical systems? There was no information in the submittal.
They will need to comply with building codes and reach requirements when they submit for building permit, and our building division's consulting plan checkers will look at that. Right now, they're using a menu of choices to meet energy requirements, so you can, you know, use insulation or different windows or electric water heaters or different appliances to meet reach code requirements, and that's something that the building division will look closely at.
So maybe I can ask the applicant or the applicant architect specifically what they're proposing in this case. On Sheet A4, there's a description of materials for the west elevation, but there's no description of materials for the other three elevations. So if it's the same materials, I think the drawings need to be modified to clarify that.
Oftentimes, architects are, as you know, they're just labeling as typical.
I don't see typical on the drawing.
No, no, it's not. And if that's something the commission feels strongly that should be on there, we can add that to the plans and instruct the applicant to submit their building permit with clarification on what the materials are on each elevation.
Okay, I think that should happen.
Okay.
That's all my questions.
Thank you, Kim. All right, well, what do you think? You ready?
Yeah.
There's one part of this, the diagrams, that I just don't get. And, and I don't know how, let's see, it's, for instance, it's on the picture of the east elevation and the west elevation. It's A4. And.
A4 Drawing 1.
Yeah, I don't exactly know how to, maybe, maybe you can help me. This line, and there was orange tape, what is that?
That's the main ridge of the first story that's.
What is that?
It's the main ridge of the first story that's increasing in height for structural reasons, I think, and.
Okay, so when I looked at the, at the house itself this afternoon, it didn't have, it was just a line of the orange plastic. It didn't attach to anything, and it didn't seem to go with anything. Was I not looking at the right thing?
You were looking at the right thing, and I think the pole, the actual story pole should have been closer to the edge of the roof than it is. It's just representing the ridge that would continue, and you can actually see it also in A5 Drawing 1. That's what it's, it's this little piece. Valerie, I'm showing her the.
The filled-in piece?
The filled-in piece, yeah, that kind of sticks up, right?
We can ask the architect what the intention of that is.
Okay.
Yeah, she's.
A headroom thing.
To speak to that, I had the same question, Margaret.
Okay. And the other thing is, I was sort of surprised, or this, this package is kind of smaller, a lot less descriptive than what we usually see. Is there a requirement that the town has for what needs to be submitted as way, in the way of drawings?
We do, we have a checklist that an architect would follow for what they're submitting. Maureen sees an architect and can speak to, you know, what she has included. The checklist includes things like a grading and drainage plan, a landscape plan, and those aren't commonly required when there's no changes to those things, and they're well established at the site. And some, some architects submit more than we need, and we ask them to simplify. But I can let the architect explain, or is there, if. I was able to determine that the application was complete using what's submitted, and that's our practice. We will see a lot more with a building permit submittal. There'll be structural drawings, for instance, that are always included with the building permits in the middle.
I guess what I was really missing was sort of a rendering of what it would look like done with the materials and how it would present from street level, kind of.
Yeah, that's not something that we have in our checklist, and that's something that we can talk about if that's helpful to the commission for us to require. I think it's, it may, it's a cost for applicants to include that. But we would obviously like to know if that's something that you want every time, and then we can start asking for that.
And the other thing was, I was looking at the neighborhood contacts. Were those all the contacts that are within 300 feet?
There's a map that I included in the staff report that shows who the applicant elected to talk to about their project. Within 300 feet is a much, much larger many-block radius, and that's who the town notifies of this project, and that was completed legally.
I see, okay, thank you. Anything more?
Thank you. Have we received any public concerns or letters since?
No.
Okay. And I don't think I'm going to, I think the development standards, Daniel, I think, and I wonder if the development standards for a subdivision may have changed since the 50s, where there might have been a substandard lot of maybe less than 7,500 square feet? Because it wouldn't make sense for a subdivision to be able to be approved in the 50s without that, I would imagine.
They're, they're all the same over there, and they all received building permit. There was very little zoning sort of review when these subdivisions were created.
Perhaps there wasn't a minimum lot size at the time?
There was a board of adjustments, and they probably had blanket variances if the lot size is undersized. There are also some non-conformances in other ways, like I mentioned about single-car parking where our rules were changed, but I'm not, I'm not aware of what they were in 58, if we increased minimum lot size.
Okay.
We may have.
Kind of moving off subject, but it's interesting. If the commissioners don't have any other questions, I'm going to ask the applicant or their architect or anybody else that would like to speak about the project, present it.
Hey there, my name's Kyle, I'm the applicant, and we are excited to hopefully have this approved because we have a family that is currently three kids, and my son and I kind of share, one of the rooms is an office slash his room, and, and that, we just, we could use some more space. And we love Corte Madera, we fell in love with it the moment we visited here, and we're planning to retire here, so we want to be able to make a space that can carry us to that endpoint.
Thank you.
All I have to say, but if you have any questions, yeah.
Perhaps the architect could come up, and I think the commission has some questions about the design. Thank you very much, Kyle, appreciate it.
Tracy, my name is Maureen Jokum, I'm the architect.
Okay.
And one of the reasons you don't see a rendering is because I hand draw, so if I were to do a perspective, it's not like I can press a button on a computer and give you a, you know, fully colored, three-dimensional view of the front of the house. That's one of the reasons that I don't do that, and to save him some money if I have to, you know, plot out a exterior perspective. And I think the house is fairly straightforward, so I don't think it's that difficult to imagine between the color, color board and the elevations. But I wanted to address your questions. One is, Tracy, can you give me the slide with the?
The property lines? Or the attic?
Your question about the ridge. Let me see what's, you look on page. Probably best is on A5. There it is. Okay, so on the bottom elevation, the proposed north elevation. So what happens is, the existing ridge that is parallel to the street is at a certain height, and it's not the highest point of the building. And when we, when we proposed the garage in front, that increased the depth of the building by 18 feet, four inches. So the E from the front of the house to the back of the house starts going up, and it becomes really tall if I keep it at 5 and 12. If you were to continue that line, that angled line from the left and continue it straight up, you'd see it almost be at the plate height of the second floor. So when I did that, I said, this, this doesn't look right, it's way too big. So I decided to change the pitch when you get to the middle of the roof. So that's why when you look at the front elevation, you see two lines. You see the new ridge line at the, the new ridge line at the highest point, and then secondary line, secondary line where the pitch is going to change. That secondary line is barely visible, because you're just changing from a 5 and 12 to a 3 and 12. And then when the story poles were put up, we had. And then when the story poles were put up, we, we had concerns because there were existing solar panels, and so we couldn't put every pole exactly where it had to go. So I think when he did the ridge across, uh, the higher ridge for the first floor, that line doesn't go all the way to the second floor, but it's supposed to intersect the second floor wall. And you'll see that in all the elevations. So that might be what was confusing. I don't remember the other questions that there were.
So, I mean, that ridge that's in the middle here that we're talking, that we're talking about, that's just to the left of the addition on the second floor plan.
Yes.
The building itself did not, where did it get larger to where your, your roof pitch was becoming a problem? Because the-
Well, once you, if you look at the front elevation, well, actually, just look at the floor plan. You look, if I'm, if I'm trying to create an eve at the front of the garage and the existing eve at the back, I, that elevation got, I mean, that depth got greater by the depth of the garage. If you compare that to the existing floor plan, you'll see the garage was way, way back there, so that ridge was defined by the front of the garage, which is 18 feet further back.
We're, we're talking about the same thing, the one that's above the bedrooms? The, the one that's between the living room and the bedrooms?
The one-
Because the, the dining room and the living room and the existing, and the two bedrooms in the front, those walls have stayed the same, right?
Right, so the bridge didn't change front to back over the bedrooms, that stayed the same. The one that got higher was the one that went, that goes parallel to the street. Because if, I can actually point up there and you can see what I'm talking about, if you want to put the plan up.
I can fix it.
Or I can go up there and show you if you'd like.
Microphone.
What?
Take the microphone with you.
Oh.
Can I? Bridge?
Absolutely, thank you. Right here, Daniel, up at C2.
All right. So the roof plan, this new roof plan, there's a ridge here, which is the highest ridge, because that's 25 feet. And there's a ridge coming through here, and it goes between here and here. And that's a lot shorter distance than the new garage, which goes from here to here. So my ridge has to go from that point to here, and it's a lot higher.
Got you.
And that's why, if I took that at five and 12, it went up to the second floor.
Should have probably had your point on the screen so that we got, it's okay. I believe the other was a, a clarification on the site plan from the front property line to the face of the garage. I'm sorry, Amy, that probably should have been up there, so that-
The site, my site plan shows the front property line to the actual wall of the garage at 266, and there's a line closer that's the edge of the roof. So the dotted line always shows the footprint of the house, so, and that's where my dimension is too. So I don't understand what the confusion is.
Yeah, that was just a confusion on the staff report's screen. I think the dimension graphically either got displaced or got covered by something. I, I do see that on your plan, it shows correctly.
Okay, so it's 266?
266.
Okay. And would you like to talk to us a little bit about the design and why you put it, where you put it, and, and how it all evolved?
The site, the site itself is small, like we've discussed. The back of the house is almost at the rear setback, so I can't add towards the back. The front bedroom wing is very close to the front setback. So the logical place to add was to be in front of the garage, in front of, in that long driveway. So we decided to move the garage forward and then take the existing garage space and convert it into living space. That also gave me a really logical place to put the stair without interrupting the whole left side of the floor plan. And then putting the second floor over the new-built garage and the remodeled living space garage made sense, just because, for economy and for, also to allow for more sightlines, because the addition is fairly narrow on the second floor versus being the full width of the house, or close to the full width. And then when I was designing it, I originally had used a hip roof for the roof on the second floor. But then I realized when I was trying to lay out solar panels that all the hips and valleys were getting in the way. I had no room for solar panels. So I ended up with a single ridge down the middle. And then to break up the mass of a fairly large gable end, I put those secondary gables front and back that created, you know, a little bit more sense of scale, broke up the elevation. And also, I think by building on the south side of the property, any shading I do is on my own property, on my client's property. I'm not shading other neighbors, because I'm on the south side of the lot, and the sun would be shading my roof or my, or their backyard. Other than that, it's, it was pretty straightforward. And then I also wanted to describe what happened with the roof on the first floor, but I think we've gone over that. Yes, all the same. Next time I will put typical, sorry. No, no, he wants the same all the way around, yes. Because sometimes I change the finish on the upstairs, but we're not doing that, it's all going to be stucco cement plaster.
I think, I think Dan had a question about meeting reach code requirements and energy requirements.
Oh. Okay, so usually, usually I do not deal with that at the planning level. This is, you know, we had to get approval for the design, then I get the engineers involved, we'll get the Title 24 consultant involved, the Cal Green consultant, and come up, I mean, the requirements are there. I can't get a permit without, you know, meeting the requirements, whether I do it one way or the other. And then we talked to a contractor and talked to the owner about picking and choosing how we make, you know, how we reach the goals that, that are established. That all happens at the permitting stage. So I have not dealt with it at this point, no.
You're going to reinstall the solar panels?
Solar panels are definitely being reinstalled. In fact, that's why I showed them on the roof plan.
I have a couple more questions.
Follow-up on that then. So are you reusing the same furnace and is that a heat pump, or is that gas?
Gas furnace was-
I'm so sorry, do you mind speaking to a microphone, because I can't hear anything?
Of course, I'm so sorry. I'm sure that must be frustrating, being remote, I'm sorry about that. I was just saying that the current furnace is an electric heat pump that we installed in the last few years, and the old furnace was completely removed. And we do still have a gas line going to the house that's currently only feeding the hot water heater, but we're not married to that. If there's some sort of need to update that, we're happy to do so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, of course.
Daniel, do you have any other questions?
No.
I'll go around the ring here. I'm Margaret. You can ask the applicant, and then we can come back to staff when we're doing, when we're delivering.
How did you approach your neighbors?
Well, I, I've never done this before, so I just talked to my neighbors directly across the street, the two to the side, and then the one behind, all of which I know pretty well, since we've lived at this property since 2019. So I just walked up to them, and most of them were like, oh, that's great, you know? I didn't get any pushback, just bow wishes on the project.
I noticed that you talked to the people at 18 Prince Royal Passage. And I'm wondering why you didn't approach the people at 14 Prince Royal Passage, because from their house, at least at a low level, you can see the story poles that you put up, and beyond that is their view of Mount Temel Pius, and I'm wondering if they would be impacted by that.
Forgive me, because I, I need to mentally map which house we're talking about. So you said 14?
14, which is next to eight. I noticed that you spoke to the people at 18.
18.
Prince Royal Passage.
Well, that's the one right behind me. And are you asking about the one-
The one that's for, towards Prince Roy, towards Paradise Drive.
Towards Paradise. So I, I don't know them personally, but that whole back part, their, their property has trees and shrubs and things, so I didn't expect that there would be much of an impact, because you already can't see because of those.
Well, you can see the, um, the story poles you put up, the orange plastic. So I just, um, I think, I think they, they probably would have noticed and said something if they were disturbed by it, but I'm just wondering how you decided to just choose those particular?
Again, I think it was just, I've never done this, and so I was just thinking, well, obviously, all of the houses that are like, exactly, that you're sharing like a property line with, you would want to talk to them about it. And since I guess they're like a corner, that's maybe why I didn't choose to include them. But I also, I, I don't know. Maybe I'm visualizing the wrong house, because there's a lot of trees with the house that I was thinking of. But in any case, I, I think just lack of experience, because I've never done a, a home renovation before, so didn't know how wide of a net to cast. And I also, I think, Maureen, you had mentioned that there would be notice sent out from the town. So I thought that might cover any, anything I'd missed.
Okay, thank you. One thing that hasn't been brought up in the discussion yet is, because of the solar panels' location in the back of the houses specifically, the lower gabled end is actually 30 inches closer to the back of the house than it will actually be. Because the 30, the, where they were supposed to go were in the middle of a solar panel, and there was no way of putting those poles there. So they're in the right location in one direction, but they're closer to the back of the house by 30 inches. The height is correct, but they would be further back. So any, any people along the back, that second floor, that closest second floor is actually 30 inches farther away.
So, in short, we wanted the story poles to, to represent, like, in this situation, what she's describing, since they couldn't go in the exact spot because of the existing solar panels, we tried to do like, you know, it's even, it's even worse than it will be, if that's, if that makes sense. Just so people could see, like, we didn't want to underplay, we'd rather overplay the space we're taking up.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions for, for me?
Look, I'll go through all the commissioners. Margaret, did you have another question for, for Kyle? Daniel? No questions? Valerie?
Yes, I have a few.
You have some questions for the applicants?
Yeah, yes, I do. All right, so I, just kind of a quick question on the lighting. And I understand that lighting plans are not proposed just yet, but we do typically see them, as Margaret has mentioned, in the package. We do see the lighting plans and lighting specifications included. And in order, kind of for us to work through all of the exterior build-outs, we typically like to see the specifications so that they meet the Cal Green requirements, so that they are, you know, using the lights, they're not contributing to the light pollution. So if you, if you have a specification in mind or anything like that, I'm not sure what kind of procedure would be for you to submit to the staff and for us to see it late, for the later date. And I'm not sure, like, how we're going to go with this one. But typically, we like to see it as a part of the application. And other question that I had is, um, on the HVAC systems, like, we understand that you, again, like, still going through the permit, and everything will be submitted at the permit level. But I think for a generic question that I have, if you're, whether or not you're installing the AC units, and if you are, how are you going to mitigate the noise and, and visible visualization of the unit itself that will be next to the house? And where are you planning to locate it?
I can speak to the second one for sure, which is that when we got that heat pump installed, we had it sized appropriately to be able to, to, um, to heat and cool the whole house. So there's not going to be anything, any new heat pump from what we already have existing. And right now, it's in just the back of our house, at setback at a point that's within the requirements. And it's very quiet, I'd highly recommend.
Okay. Okay, so you're not, you're not doing any split systems to distribute between the Level 2 and Level 1?
That's not currently the plan. The, the system has the, I don't know the technical term, but the power to, to, to cover both. We considered that when we installed the heat pump, because we didn't want to have to do it and then do it again.
Okay, great, thank you. And then my other question is just on the looks of the south elevation, proposed south elevation 3, that is drawn, because in an existing elevation had a little bit of a setback where the porch was. Now, as we're looking at it, it became a little bit more monolithic. So I was wondering if you would consider to break it up with some landscaping, perhaps some planters or something, or trellis that would go up on the wall to, again, to remove that monolithic look of the elevation and to break it down. Because I think the east elevation and the west elevation are extremely successful. They do have some level of diversity within the fronts, and kind of stepping back a little bit, whereas the 3, this is where your former entry used to be, or where it is right now. It kind of suffered a little bit.
Not sure, I, I, I don't know if it's just the audio, I, I was having trouble hearing. So it, the, I heard we're wondering about some landscaping for the-
Yeah, I was wondering if there is a way you guys could agree to break it up a little bit to remove that monolithic look from that elevation? Because right now, it looks like all flat, long wall, where it used to be a setback for the porch on the existing entry.
Are you talking about for the, the elevation for the north and/or south side?
South side, correct.
Got it. Well, the, um, maybe you should cover it. It's, there's not a lot of room to see anything.
The south elevation is along the property line and is five feet away from the fence. And so what you're seeing on the south elevation is from the back of the house, through the kitchen, and to the garage. And then the offset is only about 12 feet with, to the side of the bedroom. So there's not really a monolithic wall that I'm, that has a big visual presence, because it's on the side of the property.
But is it where it used to be setback, correct? Because that's where you used to have, or where it, the, the entry to the house is coming from there right now, right? So currently, on your plans, the existing floor plan, is showing that that was an elevation 2, and it shows a setback for the porch and the entry into the house. And then on the new plans, it became an elevation 3 on A4, and it became much more monolithic. And I understand it's right next to the property line, it's right next to the fence, but are you okay with, because, again, before, you used to have a porch there and a setback.
Porch now just faces the street.
I, I think one confusion may be, our house is a little strangely set up in its current configuration, where the entrance to the house, the door that you open, isn't, you can't see it from the street. If you're just, if you're looking straight at the house from the street, our front door is not there. It's, it's sideways, so it's facing south. So you walk up to it, and then you turn and walk into the house. So it may look like, like the, the place you're, the place you're describing, it's-
Isn't significant, okay.
No? Whereas now that we're building that all out, that whole elevation is just side of the house. that whole elevation is just side of the house. So it's basically just that five foot corridor that you get used to walk to your backyard. So I don't know if we'd want to install vegetation there for fire code or just entryway reasons or something.
You have a six foot fence there? Was there like a big fence?
We have whatever the normal fence is. I'm not certain.
Six foot fence? I think the commissioners is asking if you could soften it up with some landscaping.
Yeah, as long as we're, we're allowed to put, you know, stuff in that, that corridor, then we can. It just, I, I wouldn't want to, we just got to visit about fire code stuff. And so I don't want to put too much vegetation in that corridor, but.
I was, yeah, I was just asking in general about that esthetical look because again, you, because you're rotating your entry into the house ninety degrees, which will face the front of the street. Currently yours, your entry is not that way. So I was wondering if it's going to bother the neighbors with the fact that now it's going to be more of a side of, like a true side of the house with more monolithic look. If, if this is something that you, you know, we, we are not designing here, we cannot recommend you to design certain things one way or another. So we, we I just had that as a question, like whether or not aesthetics of the house, as it's currently stands, will change because you're changing into more of a monolithic elevation look. That's all.
Got it.
Just so that you understand too, if you look at the site plan, it's a requirement for me to show the footprint, at least the beginning of the footprint on the house on either side. And the house on the right hand side, which is the north elevation we're talking about, actually extends and lines up with the bedroom. So there's no like view that used to be there, that's not going to be there anymore. Because their construction comes all the way to the front of the, of our bedroom wing.
It's almost like they've already got showing at us in a sense.
Okay. Do any commissioners have any more questions? Okay. Like to close this part of the meeting, the applicant's presentation, and we're going to move to public comment. If there's anybody online or in person that would like to speak about this project, I can give you three minutes.
I see two hands raised online. The first one I see is Aiden. I'm going to allow you to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Can you say that again? It's, it's really faint.
Yeah, we can hear you. You can go ahead.
Oh, thanks. I, I, I'm a neighbor, actually. Sorry, this is the first one of these. I'm a neighbor. I've been out of the country for three years, for three months, for three weeks. And I returned home and I wasn't contacted at all. And I'm the neighbor actually at fourteen Prince Royal Passage with the trees there. Now, I was gone for three weeks and I returned home this weekend. And as soon as I walked in my backyard, I can see the poles clearly from my backyard. And I, I was surprised. I haven't received an email or memo from anybody. And today, coming back from three weeks out of the country, I got this notice. So hence I, I, I joined. But I was not contacted about this to answer one of the commissioners' questions. I can see it. It's a little, it's, I could see the poles. I, I don't know. There'll be a window that could look into my backyard. I don't know if any study was conducted to check the sunlight, because it, I mean, it's, it's hard to notice really with poles, but I don't know like how, how much sunlight would be impacted for me. Has any, has any like a study been done for that? I mean, am I the only neighbor that asked, is, is, is raising issues?
This is the time for you to provide comments. And then at the end of the public comment, the chair can ask us to reply to anything that's
Okay. Well, yeah, that, 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 I mean, that's my comment. I mean, is it going to be a window that could look into my backyard? I do have trees there now. However, I can see the poles. So it, it doesn't look bad, but you know, the trees might not be there forever. And then clearly, it will impact the sunlight with a second story home. In addition, for let's say conservatively, a year that this project will take the noise and dust that will impact me, my family. Those are my comments. People need to, people need to do what they need to do, right, to add rooms to accommodate a family, but it does impact other fam, other neighbors.
Thank you, Aiden.
All right. And then I have a second hand raise. This is Chat. Chat, I'm gonna allow you to unmute yourself.
Hi, I just wanted to comment as a neighbor at twenty-two Prince Royal Passage. I have a direct line of sight. I'm, corner of our fences meet in the backyard. And I think the project drawn up is in line with the neighborhood. I agree with it. Just want to show my support. There's multiple homes in our area that have a second story built. I don't see any reason why he shouldn't have his done in the way that it's been designed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't see any other hands online and nothing in the public comment inbox.
Okay. Well, why don't we go back to some of these questions about sunlight and window orientation? I think that we didn't, we didn't require a some solar study because of the location of this particular addition and the orientation of the building. Is that correct?
It's correct. In the northern hemisphere, the sun arcs through the south. So the shadows cast by this addition would be onto the lot.
Onto the lot itself.
A little bit of explanation of that on page eight of the staff report. And I think the project architect could speak to that as well.
Correct.
Yeah. There's a window that faces the rear yard. And that window is in the office. There's a, a window schedule on A two, that's window number three. It's seventy-two inches by forty-four inches, a gliding window. And whether or not that's necessary also for egress from a room that could potentially be used as a sleeping room. The project architect may be able to answer that. But again, it's, it's seventy-two by forty-four inches.
It's more than fifty feet away. Because we got twenty-five foot setbacks here and it's diagonal.
Yes, I think it's over forty feet away from the rear property line.
Yeah, I mean, and then, and then there's another setback for the neighbors on Prince Royal. So probably over fifty feet. Okay. Well, at this time, I'd like to move to deliberations. Valerie, do you want to start comments?
Sure. I, I think the project is very straightforward. I don't see any issues with it. And I think just for the lack of couple of the supportive information, like lighting and HVAC systems to meet the reach codes, as Dan has been mentioning, I don't see any obstacles of approving this project.
Margaret?
I have a concern about the, the neighbor at, at fourteen Prince Royal Passage, only because, not because of the, the noise and the dust, that's to be expected with any any building anywhere. And I have a concern about a view that might be. And I don't know if that's a view blocking Mount Tam or not, because I was at street level, not at the, inside that house level. And, but I know that that could be a very disturbing factor. And I'm a little concerned that, that there wasn't a broader contact of the neighbors in the, in that area. Other than that, I think, given that these are small houses and people need more space and that, that, although this will be the only two story house on that block that I can see. I think that's what's going to be happening to that neighborhood. And I think this, this will give the family more room and I would like to see a rendering of, of what it would look like. But other than that, I think that I have no objection to to what's going on. I would, I would like the owner to, the applicant to, to talk to this neighbor at fourteen Prince Royal Passage and see if they might be able just to have a discussion, say hello to each other and just have the applicant explain what's going to be happening to his yard and the views and the, where the windows will be. Maybe in a face to face and in a neighborly kind of way. But otherwise, I have no objections.
Thank you. Daniel?
Yeah, I guess first I have a question for staff, which is my concern that A four doesn't show the materials on the east and south or north elevation and whether that needs to be part of the resolution or or whether that will be handled by staff in another way.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that could be part of the motion that that's added to the plans that particular sheet prior, because we, we approved the plans and, and we, you approved the resolution, both things you're doing. And before we would stamp the plans as approved, we would have the architect add the materials to each of the elevations on A four, and that would be part of a motion if the commission is
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so I'm, I'm in favor of this application. They, as the staff, the good, really good staff report indicates, it's consistent with the general plan. It's consistent with the requirements of design review. I think the architect and applicant have done a really good job of of meeting their space requirements in a way that's, I think, consistent with the architecture of the neighborhood. I I, I think the staff has clarified that there shouldn't be no shadow impacts. And relative to the speaker, the resident, I think at fourteen, I don't think the window from the study, since it's oblique and it's not adjacent behind that property, but it's oblique and it's going to be, you know, more than forty feet, maybe even sixty feet away. I don't think that will be a problem. So I'm prepared to, so I'm prepared to support this application.
Thank you, Daniel. Well, I concur with most, with all the commissioners, although the, I mean, the floor ratio is kind of elevated because of the size of the lot. I think it's super compatible with a lot of the other projects we've approved in the neighborhood. And I can appreciate that the garage moved forward and we still have two off-street parking that's not, that uncovered off-street parking. So there's, you know, there's four parking spaces on property. So at this time, I'd like to ask if we could have a motion. And I believe that the motion might need to contain your conditions of adding some.
I can make a motion.
Okay.
In the matter of design review application, PL twenty-five dash zero zero one seven for a five hundred ninety-two square foot second story addition to an existing one-story home at thirteen Pacific Queen Passage, including conversion of the existing garage to living space and construction of a new three hundred forty-eight square foot attached two-car garage. I make a motion for approval of resolution number two-five dash zero zero seven with the condition that the elevations as shown on sheet A four will indicate the materials as shown in the west elevation on the other three elevations.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Can staff please call a vote?
Commissioner Bendel?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Busher?
Yes.
And Chair Rizzo?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Congratulations.
I'm just going to read the appeal rights real quick.
Oh, sorry, the appeal rights.
Following action by the planning commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision of the planning commission may be appealed to the town council within ten calendar days of the date of the decision. Appeal forms are available at town hall or online on our website. And effective July first, we have a change in our fee. So an appeal is fifteen hundred dollars to file the appeal.
Thank you very much. So if anybody does need to take a break, I'd like to move on. Is everybody okay? Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to some, a business item. A discussion of a proposed public noticing policy. And Claire Smith and Martha are, are two planners that are, that are going to present. Please feel free to start whenever.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, we are bringing you a business item for the discussion of a proposed enhanced public noticing policy. No formal action will be taken this evening. The planning commission will provide feedback to staff on the draft public noticing policy. And staff will incorporate the feedback and return to a future meeting with a finalized policy for consideration by the commission. Item is intended to be a discussion, so feel free to ask questions during the presentation as they come about. I will start by explaining the proposed policy and then Martha will guide you through some focused discussion questions. All right. So the action item, establish enhanced public noticing standards for large projects was included in the twenty twenty-four, twenty and twenty twenty-five Corder Madera staff work plans. Large projects are expected to increase as we see more redevelopment associated with housing element opportunity sites. And projects of this scale and complexity will involve extensive entitlement processes and necessitate robust community engagement through public noticing. Staff reviewed the policies of neighboring jurisdictions that have project noticing requirements that exceed those mandated by state law. The review focused on the noticing policies of the cities of Nevada and San Rafael, both of which have extensive experience processing entitlements for larger scale development projects. The primary difference between their policies and the town's current requirements is in the inclusion of onsite signage for qualifying projects. is in the inclusion of onsite signage for qualifying projects. Full summary of the policies for each of these jurisdictions is included in the staff report. The town's existing policy consists of legal noticing requirements combined with additional public engagement strategies that are implemented by staff as determined appropriate. The legal noticing requirements include the following. For townwide projects, such as general plan or zoning code amendments, the town is required to publish a legal notice in the newspaper a minimum of 10 days before a hearing. For site-specific projects, notices are mailed to all properties within 300 feet and posted at the designated locations at least 10 days prior to a hearing or decision date. Staff also uses public engagement strategies, and these are often implemented to further publicize projects as found appropriate. Some examples of what we've done in the past are hosting study sessions, promoting projects through the town's social media accounts, creating project webpages, sending mailers to Corder Madera residences, hosting informational pop-up events, including articles in the weekly town newsletter. And staff utilized many of these techniques during the robust engagement process for the housing element update from 2021 to 2023, as well as more recently during the entitlement process for the multifamily project at 240 Tamil Vista Boulevard. This slide shows some examples of public engagement strategies that we've implemented in the past to publicize projects. Attachment 2 of the staff report also includes examples of recent public engagement used by staff. Staff has created a draft policy utilizing a matrix format with five tiers. The proposed policy establishes enhanced noticing for a variety of major development projects. The primary changes to noticing requirements are related to onsite signs and notices for qualifying development projects. On screen is the draft policy framework. This is also included as attachment 1 to the staff report. The matrix identifies applicable project types for each tier, describes the noticing requirements, and outlines opportunities for public engagement. Tier 1 applications include general plan, specific plan and zoning code amendments, preliminary plans and amendments, precise plans, and any other applications determined to be similar to these projects. The new policy does not propose any changes to the required noticing for these project types. Staff determined that the new onsite signage requirements recommended for other tiers is not appropriate for these projects because they are usually not tied to a single site and they typically do not involve a development proposal. Projects will either, will continue to either be noticed through a newspaper legal ad or by mailing notices to properties within 300 feet and posting at the required locations. In addition to legal noticing, staff often implements multiple public engagement strategies to publicize, including workshops or public hearings for these types of projects. The staff report lists some more examples of what has been done for the past. Tier 2 includes major design review projects that include the development of a new commercial building or a new residential building consisting of five or more units. Staff is proposing to add the requirement for an onsite sign to be posted at the project site within 30 days of an application being submitted to the planning division. One of the primary reasons to post an onsite sign is that it notifies the community early in the entitlement process and it encourages residents to stay informed about opportunities for public engagement. Staff is proposing a sign size that would range from four feet tall by six feet wide to six feet tall by eight feet wide. This slide shows the draft template for larger signs and is also included as attachment 3 to the staff report. Tier 3 is proposed to include major design review projects, including new single-family residences, residential developments with four or fewer units, substantial alterations to single-family residences, or major modifications to commercial buildings. The draft policy proposes a requirement for a small onsite sign for these projects. The sign would be installed at the time of story poll installation, which is 14 days prior to the public hearing. The current draft for the small sign is 11 inches by 17 inches and would feature information similar to the public notices that are mailed and posted by town staff. The onsite signage would serve as an additional notification to neighbors ahead of the mailed notices and will also provide context for the story polls installed at the project site. This sign posting would be in addition to the existing noticing requirements that require a public notice to be mailed 10 days prior to the public hearing to all properties within 300 feet of the project site and posted at required locations. This slide shows the draft template for small onsite signs. It's also included as attachment 4 to the staff report. Tier 4 includes applications for minor design review, minor use permits, minor variances, tree permits, and home occupations. No noticing changes are proposed for these application types. These projects are minor in nature and generally are only of interest to more direct neighbors rather than the broader community. A notice will continue to be mailed to all properties within 300 feet of the project site and posted at the required locations 10 days prior to the decision being rendered. Applications in tier 5 are ministerial applications that involve no discretion. This includes ADU permits, SB9 lot splits, and SB9 two-unit development applications. No changes are proposed to noticing requirements for tier 5. A courtesy notice will continue to be mailed to all properties within 300 feet and posted at required locations. I'm now going to hand it off to Martha, and she's going to go over some discussion questions.
Good evening, commissioners. These next series of slides includes questions that we have put together that we're looking for feedback from the commission on. As Claire mentioned, we'll take the feedback that we receive from the commission this evening and finalize the policy and then return to a future meeting. So these focus questions are also in your staff report as well. And if there's any additional information, changes you would like to see, then obviously we want to hear that feedback as well. So the first question relates to the size of the proposed onsite signs. And again, these are for larger projects that include a new commercial building or a new residential development, that's five or more units. So the draft policy as currently proposed would require these signs to be four feet tall by six feet wide, up to six feet tall by eight feet wide. So we're curious to get the commission's feedback if the sizing proposed is adequate. Also are interested in the commission's feedback on what factors should be considered when determining what size sign should be placed on the properties.
So have the commissioners had an opportunity to take a look at the sign over here? This, that's four by six, this for reference?
Yes.
That was the one that was posted in front of the housing project on Tamil Vista.
We're going to go through all the questions, and then at the end of the presentation, we'll go and get feedback on all of them. So this slide is showing this, a picture of the sign that was proposed at 240 Tamil Vista. And so as discussed in the staff report, staff conducted a trial run of the large sign format to better understand what an applicant would have to go through to install one of these signs. The trial also helped to find the draft template that was included in your staff report. So the sign is here at the meeting for the planning commission to take a look at. The size of the sign was four feet in height by six feet wide. And the material that was used is a DIA bond, and this is a lightweight aluminum composite material. And through discussions with sign company, we thought that this was the best and most appropriate material to use, given the duration that these signs would be on a property and also because of weather. So these signs would be installed 30 days after an application is submitted. So it potentially could be up for, you know, six months to a year. So given the length of time, we wanted a sign material that would withstand the.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Correct, yes.
So I don't, I'm not clear on why this is before the commission, how this is going to be implemented, why it's not codified by zoning, how it's going to be enforced, and is one of the questions whether we should do this at all? And do we have that discretion?
That's not one of the questions, but if the commission has feedback on that, we would like to hear it. This was included in the current work plan as an item for development, and it's being developed as a policy instead of as a code amendment because that allows flexibility in case it needs to be amended in the future.
So it's going to happen one way or another, what you're saying? The sign requirement?
Well, so it's good feedback if you don't want to see this happen. It was direction from the council that we develop a policy. And so our logical step was to talk to you all because you do hear most of the land use projects that come forward. And if you don't feel that this is something that we should do, we can carry that message forward. But this has been in the work plan for a couple of years now. And, you know, as Martha said, we really tested this and created a draft policy that mimics other jurisdictions. So, but we'll take any feedback that you have on this.
So this will go to council after whatever feedback you get?
Yeah, we will kind of evaluate based on your feedback what our next steps are. But I will say, most other jurisdictions don't codify this. It is in guideline form, so it is somewhat flexible. We can change requirements, we can change the sign companies that we're working with or whatever it is, but it's still enforced.
How is it enforced if it's a policy?
So generally, if we have it on our application checklist, it's enforceable for our applicants to be able to complete an application or to move forward with a project. So it's not enforceable in a way where it's in the code and we, but even in guideline form, it's still enforceable.
Okay, thank you.
And just to give some additional context, something that's kind of similar, our story poll requirements, that is not in the code, but it's a required policy, and we require all applicants to install story polls for second story additions.
That's very helpful. Thanks.
So the second question relates to the types of projects that would require onsite signs. So the draft policy establishes two different tiers in which onsite signs would be required. The first, tier 2, are major design review projects, and this again includes new commercial buildings or new residential buildings with five or more units. And for that, what staff has proposed is that for a large onsite sign, be installed 30 days after a planning application is submitted. The tier 3 includes major design review projects that include such things as new single-family residences or major modifications to residential or commercial structures. And projects in tier 3 would require a small onsite sign, that's 11 inches by 17 inches, that would be required to be installed 14 days before the public hearing. So staff is interested in the commission's feedback on if the projects listed in the tiers that would require these signs are appropriate. And specifically, we would like to know if the commission feels that there are other projects where we should require the onsite sign. The third question relates to the information that would be required on the onsite signs. Staff prepared draft onsite templates, both for the large onsite signs and then also for the small onsite signs. The large notice sign was included as attachment 3, and then the small onsite sign was included as attachment 4 to the staff report. And the final question relates to the public engagement strategies that the town currently utilizes. And we are interested in the commission's feedback on if there are additional strategies that we should consider in the future. As Claire mentioned, some of the typical types of strategies that are done include hosting study sessions or promoting projects through the town's social media accounts, including newsletters in the weekly newsletter, sending mailers to residents, hosting pop-up events, or sending emails to interested parties list. So that concludes the staff presentation. Again, the purpose of the discussion is to get feedback from the commission, which would be incorporated into a final policy that would be brought back before the commission at a future meeting. So we'd like to hear your feedback on those identified questions that we just went over, and then also if there's any additional feedback as well.
Why don't we, why don't we start the first question and stay kind of focused on the question? And at the end of the four questions, we can open up to any other concerns the commission has, questions.
I guess, Jim, I have some questions, or general questions?
Yes.
That would be helpful in trying to answer the questions?
As long as they pertain to the question, so we don't go down in the discussion.
Well, necessarily, no. Why do we have to follow the questions?
That's what we're being.
For example, I'd like to know Nevado and San Rafael are cities, and they're much larger population. Did we explore Larkspur, Mill Valley, Tiburon? That's a question that's not in these questions, but it's relevant to understanding the information presented by.
They're going to have an opportunity to do that after we get through the four questions.
I can answer that question really quick. If, smaller cities do require onsite noticing. The city of Larkspur requires small onsite notices being posted, which are, I think, 11 by 17 or eight and a half by 11, and they're posted when the public hearing notices is mailed out. So as far as we are aware, the only cities that require a large sign be posted at the beginning of a process, entitlement process, is San Rafael and Nevado. And one of the reasons this was included as a work plan item is because as some of the housing sites are redeveloped, we're anticipating larger projects than what has typically been evaluated in town. And we anticipate that those projects, there may be broader members of the community that would have, would want to be involved in the process than typically is noticed in a traditional noticing.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions you have regarding this particular item? Could you bring the question back up, and just also comment on it?
Go ahead with the questions that have been raised.
Margaret, would you like to speak on the focus question number one? They get all touchy.
Here, can you hear me? Thank you. I think, first, just in general, I think it's a really important subject. I think notice is, on a broader scale, is constitutionally, you know, required. And in my experience, and my experience sitting here, often people say, well, they didn't get notice, and of course, they did, or it's somehow there, but they feel slighted in some way. And so I think it's really an important subject. And I think the size is fine. My, I think that as long as a person passing, for instance, in a car, could see that something's going on at that site, of course, they won't have time passing in a car to read the whole thing. Of course, they won't have time passing in a car to read the whole thing. But they are kind of seeing something is going on in that spot. And I think, I think it's important. And I think the size of the signs are, seem good to me. I think that.
You think the larger the project or the larger the lot that the sign should increase?
I think it should, especially if it's on a main thoroughfare. The bigger the sign can be on a main thoroughfare where people are passing, I think that's really important. And as long as there's a reference on the sign to where they can get more information about it, that would be the right way to go. I think, what did I do? The only thing that I, that's the one about the signs, okay. The only, okay, that's all I have to say about signs.
Valerie, do you have any, can you comment on the size of the signs? And if you have any comments on any factors?
Yes, all right. So similar to, I think everyone else, they have other comments as well. But if staying focused on this question. So I think the four by six is an all right size for a medium project. So I would say like tier three perhaps. But for the tier two projects, something as an example of the multifamily residential developments as we have seen in front of us. I, I do doubt that four to six is the right size. And I think one of the images that you had up on the screen kind of showcased that. That sign was very difficult, and I walked a lot by that sign when it was there. That particular sign very difficult to read unless you are very close to it. People who are passing by the car and that particular intersection was a great example. They will not have time to scan the QR code. So in, in my thing, it's not just, in my opinion, it's not just the size that needs to change, but perhaps the information that is in the sign as well. Perhaps the graphical design of the sign simplified a little bit more so that people can catch bold, larger letters on the sign and then a larger QR code that can be caught by the passing car on the phone, right? People just have few seconds and they can do it very quickly while they're driving. But if it's too small, right, it creates unsafe situation. So just kind of recommendation to reconsider graphics and what information is placed on the sign in general. Because we don't have to lay out the entire information about the project, people can look it up. But to give them the tools to be able to look it up quickly, I think that would be important. And in terms of the other factors, I feel like for the tier two projects, we should mandate to place the signs at multiple areas of, not just at the front of the project, but perhaps on the sides, especially if the project potentially has two entries to decide. Again, this multifamily residential development would be a great example of that. Is to, where people typically would approach from Redwood High School, you know, that corner particularly also would benefit from having a sign. And just from different areas where people have more time to look at the signs in general and to be notified. And other idea that I thought would be extremely beneficial, because I, again, I'm passionate about this subject, because I do agree with Margaret, with Margaret that it's extremely important to notify people. And we do have sometimes complaints from the residents that they've somehow got missed identification or it didn't reach them. So I think having this being talked about is very important. So other idea that I thought of is perhaps all of the active projects somehow could be a banner in front of the town hall. Perhaps like this is what we kind of looking at now for the tier two projects, not, not for the small residential projects, because again, those can be locally notified and being on the website. But for the large projects, commercial developments, multifamily residential, to have those temporary posters being on a display at the town hall location too, so that as pedestrians passing by, they also have it there. Almost like a similar how the, our fire station has some interesting interactive information at the front as well. So that's on the question one, and I'll have more on others.
Thank you. Dan, you want to bring it back to you for anything?
Despite my earlier comments, I'm not opposed to the signs. In fact, I think they're a good idea. This question is related to tier two only?
As currently proposed, the large sign, so a sign like that would be for the tier two projects. So those are the projects that are new commercial buildings or larger.
Okay, it doesn't say tier two, so I just wanted to clarify.
Correct, this is tier two.
So I actually think four feet by six feet is fine. You can't read these signs at six by eight, you still can't read them if you're driving by. And so, and you know, I think it's, I think it's more important is that there be more than one sign if there's more than one street frontage. I think that should be the major driver about how many signs. Now, something like the Macy's site might be an exception because the building, because there's so much frontage on one side that maybe you want two signs on, on the major frontage and another one on the side. But again, if this is a policy and there's staff discretion, you know, that it could be done, looked at on a site by site basis.
Agreed.
I have, I have one more comment. It wants to finish, sorry, it's hard to see.
I think Daniel's done.
I'm done.
Okay, just one more comment for the tier two projects. And now we have the noticing radius of 300 feet. And I was wondering if it would be beneficial to extend it to 500 feet so that more people engaged, because larger projects impact larger group of people.
So those requirements are codified in the municipal code. So we believe we would have to amend the code. However, staff does have the flexibility to do a larger radius than the minimum required by the code. So for the 240 Tamil Vista project, we did a 500-foot mailing radius for all the notices, even though only 300 feet was required. So, okay.
Okay, great. Well, my comment, again, I think the bigger the better on these big projects. And I think that one of the big things is kind of the location. What are the parameters about where it's going to be? Does it have to be a certain distance from the property line to be read? I would imagine it has to be on the property line if, if you didn't want people trespassing on people's property. So there's that. And, you know, the font size and the boldness, I think, you know, a little study needs to be taken place. Like make a few signs up and drive by and see if you can read it type of thing. I would even encourage having a bit more information for some of the people that don't get online all the time. You might want to put some of the development standards. You might not be able to read them as you drive by, but if you're walking by, it might be interesting to have that there. A lot of times I take pictures of these things and the QR code, you know, won't work. So I'll just take a picture. If the website could be included, I think that's important because as a drive-by, sometimes you click on the sign and you can go back to it and get on the URL. But I think for me, you know, multiple signs on, on corners, bigger projects, you might want multiple signs. I do like, you know, I don't know if we have a notification board, but that's a really interesting thing. A lot of people do come to, they walk by this beautiful building and they come in here. And if there's postings of what's, what's up and coming and interesting projects, I think that might be something fun to have if it's, you know, tastefully displayed and it doesn't look like I've posted up there. But anyway, on this, I think the bigger the better, you know, six feet, that's, it did look very small on, on the site, on 240. Just looking, you know, in relationship to the building and the parcel. So it would have been great to at least have two and larger, in my opinion, on the property lines, if that was possible.
Can I add one more?
One more? Absolutely.
I think the, the very good thing about this particular sign is the picture of what the building is going to look like. Because I think you can kind of, you know, I'm just thinking of someone driving by and looking at that and going like that, and then wanting to find out more information. So picture is worth a thousand words. I think that's great. I don't think anybody driving by can do a QR code. It's just, that's not going to happen. Maybe they'll take a, I don't even think that there's time to take out a camera or your phone and take a picture of it. But if the picture is there and you want to see more information about it, there it is. Town of Corder Madera and a picture of what's going to happen. And I, it's not here, but I assume that for any big project, maybe they could use the reader board outside every once in a while and, you know, put, did you see the, or 240 Tamil Vista, new plan, find out more, or something like that.
Okay. Can we move on to question two, please? Dan, you want to start with this one?
Yeah, I think under the second question, I'm not sure we've got, my notes. Oh, what about alterations to multifamily properties? I don't think that's covered.
That would likely be a tier three if it's a substantial change to the exterior. So we could clarify and add that.
Yeah, it lists very specific cases, but it doesn't cover multifamily.
And tier, tier, the differential between tier three and tier four is tier three projects go to the planning commission for consideration, whereas tier four are staff level applications. And currently as proposed, onsite signs are not included for staff level decisions. But if the commission feels there should be onsite small signs, then we'd like to hear that feedback.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't follow. Could you say it again?
Yeah, so both tier two and tier three projects, which are the projects where onsite signs are proposed to be required, go to the planning commission for consideration. And then the tier four, four projects, those are staff level decisions.
Right. But on tier three, you say major design review, single family, single family, commercial. Major modifications to commercial, major modification of single family, a new single family, but it doesn't cover apartment buildings.
So we can clarify that a major modification to an apartment building would require.
Okay, thanks.
Margaret?
I'm just, on the tier three buildings, major design review projects, with, in addition to the story polls, you're, are we suggesting that a sign be put up to?
Yes.
Yeah, it would be a smaller sign, 11 by 17 size, so about this big. And it would have information similar to what we're going to put out in the public notice. But it's going to be posted instead of being mailed the 10 days before the hearing. It would be at the same time as story polls, that's 14 days. And I think part of the thought of that is being up at the same time as the story polls helps provide some reference to neighbors walking by. And, you know, maybe gives them something to stop by and read. Obviously, they can, it has our information to reach out and ask questions. But like the project that went before tonight, that would be a project that would have theoretically a sign in front posted. And you could kind of reference the story polls on the pictures, because usually our notices have pictures.
I think it would be important on that sign to put information about how a person, a neighbor could access public comment. You know, write a letter, tune into the meeting. It's, you know, how, how they should have some comment, if they, if they have a comment about it, how to make the comment. Also, on the, the signs that, the information on the signs that, I don't know how to, I don't exactly know where it would go, but I think it's important for the certain signs, say in tier, well, for instance, on the 240 Tamil Vista, somewhere to it be referenced that the town didn't have too much discretion about it. Because people think, oh, the town did it to us. You know, the town is, and we, we didn't do it. You know, it was based on something that came from somewhere far above. And so it would be important for people to know that, who was responsible for this particular building or the way it is. And I don't know if, I mean, I think that all the signs are appropriate. The only one I have a question about is in tier four, the home occupations. When someone near my home was going to have a home occupation, I got notice. But there wasn't a whole lot of information on the notice. I don't know. I think that certain home occupations that might increase traffic or parking in an area or traffic in an area or require certain noise in certain, during certain times of the day or special lighting, might need some kind of sign. So people would have no, more information and would be able to object. And I think this, you know.
Do you have something to say, Amy?
Sure, Commissioner Vandell, I just wanted to talk about the home occupation permits real quick. Because the types of home occupations that we allow within our code are usually put into a little box so they don't have those kind of impacts to neighbors. So we don't allow something that would be allowed in a commercial space. But it's something that has already been reviewed by ordinance that fits within a residential landscape and character. So, and I think with the noticing, our goal is just to make sure people are notified and then they can contact us. Because really, the goal is that they engage. And then once they're engaged, we can talk to them about, well, what are they proposing? What are your concerns? And, and we're really able to kind of have that dialogue. So it's, it's a balance, because you can't put a lot on the notice, especially when you have the legally required ones that may also have to be published in a newspaper. Or, you know, we do post them here at town hall, so you're limited in the space. So we want to give them enough information so they have an idea of what's going on and then they're able to contact us. So I don't know if that helps, but it's,
Well, I understand.
We're trying to strike that balance, but it's good, it's good feedback.
Have any other questions? Any other comments?
No.
Okay. Valerie, you still with us?
Yes.
Hang in there.
So my comment only about the 11 by 17 sign on the tier three. uh, renovations. I feel like it's a little bit too small.
Commissioner Vandell, if you can hold on a second, um, I think we just need some more audio, some louder for the Zoom. Okay, try again now.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Better.
Perfect.
Jordan.
Uh, I was just commenting on the size of 11 by 17 sign on tier three projects. I feel um, that occasionally these projects can go pretty large. Um, if they have, um, a significant remodeling of the house and when they're fencing it out, um, the 11 by 17 signs are a little bit too small, uh, perhaps, um, 24 by 36, um, inches. Like that's, that probably a little bit larger, has a little bit more information. Um, I agree with other commissioners, putting the information on the sign or where to go for the public hearing to submit the comment or the other things should be probably the only information. Like, you know, the image of the project and then where to go to submit the public comment almost. Um, just as simple design as possible to have an easy way for people to read through the information very quickly and to go to where they need to go. Um, that's, that was the only comment that I had about the question two um, for that particular sign. 11 17 is just too small. I feel like every time when you pass by a car, you never can see 11 by 17 signs.
I, I kind of agree with that. Uh, did you want to have one more?
Well, go ahead and I'll go after you.
Okay, great. So, uh, I, I think the same thing. If you're doing a remodel and you've got the story polls up, we got to make sure that the sign's big enough that it could be on poles or something on the property line because you don't want people get wandering on people's property if we have signs. Um, I like having a little more information on the, on the development standards because that gives, I think it would eliminate a lot of questions on, for staff, because if they start getting calls, I'm like, well, what is this project? And they're going to have to go over. You know, how big is it? How tall is it? You know, how wide is it? I think if that information was readily available to the walkers, because I think that's where you're going to find the neighborhood getting engaged is when they walk by a project and they see that and they're going to go, well, what is this? And if, you know, I, I don't know if everybody in our community is as computer literate as, as they need to be to log on and find it and, and do all that. So I think having some more information might be nice. That's my opinion. But I definitely think that it would be good to have the tier three a little bit bigger. Um, I do have a question about the staff, um, reviewed, staff review projects. Do they still? Is there a radius notification that goes out on those staff review projects? There is, right? So they, they still get notified?
300 feet notice. So the same radius as the planning commission.
Some of those staff review projects get large enough to where the neighbors would question how, how'd this get approved without me knowing about it, even though they were notified? I mean, I don't know if it makes sense if there's a tier of a staff reviewed project that is actually large enough to warrant such a thing because, you know, neighbors do get shocked on, on the large, you know, sometimes when it, when an addition goes in the backyard and, you know, a lot of these people, they throw their mail out. They think it's a mailer and then all, well, they didn't get notified. But if there was a sign on something that was a little bit, I don't want to call it a major staff review, but, uh, you know, you guys know what I'm talking about. A, a larger addition, that's a single story. For instance, you had a small house and then someone can double the size of their house almost and or can you? How much, how many square feet can you add on a single level? About 50% so you
About 50% it gets
You could have a pretty substantial remodel without, you know, really having story polls up or anything like that. So. That would be my comments on this particular.
I, I will say, having worked with this team for a couple of years now, it's always a little bit of a dance. Uh, can we approve this administratively or should this go to the commission? So we really listen to you all on when things come forward, what comments you have. Do we think this is similar to that project? Do we need to, or is there enough controversy that we anticipate, we will always move it forward to commission? So, um, I think if, sometimes we get surprised, but most of the time if we decide to do something administratively, um, it's not controversial. Um, but we err on the side of moving things towards commission if we even think that there might be controversy or it might be neighbors concerned or, or it's just um, goes a little bit too far for what we feel we should do administratively. So, um, and sometimes they do have story polls and they will have to do, you know, the requirements of these guidelines. So, um, I think the other good thing about these being guidelines is that we can, we can change them as, as we go.
True.
So if we feel like it's not enough, I mean, really, any notification system will never be enough. Uh, we're trying to do as much as we can short of going door to door. Um, so we can always, if we feel like something's not adequate, we can try something different. Um, but we, we try to listen to the community of they feel like, oh, they didn't know something was happening. Okay, how do we do that better the next time? So this is, this is really in that spirit of trying to make sure we're being as transparent and engaging as possible.
Correct. I was just commenting on tier four on some of the more, uh, the larger additions that could happen under a staff level that would be in our eyes modest. And even in the commission's eyes, but might shock a neighbor because they weren't aware of their neighbor's project. Anyway, that, that was just a comment. I think we're ready for question three.
I got, well,
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan, you had one more.
Uh, well, I just wanted to reiterate what Valerie and, and you said, uh, relative to the 11 by 17 sign for tier three. I think you're not going to get much information on 11 by 17 sign. I noticed that San, I think San Rafael was 24 by 36. Maybe that's too big. I'm not sure. And then relative to the zoning requirements, you'll never get that on the smallest sign, but it could say that it meets, you know, could say meet setback and height and FAR or something simple you can get on the sign. So people at least know, you know, that
Not a variance.
It's not a variance, yeah. I have some questions we can do at the end.
Okay, great. Let's move to question three. Valerie?
On the draft signage, so I'm, I'm trying to understand what draft signage templates, um, that should be added. You, you, are you talking about just like a general information that we adding on the signs or?
You're talking about, yeah.
Yeah. So this was a dra- attachment three and four to the staff report where the
Oh, yes.
templates. I, I will point out, um, the, the draft template for the, the larger signs currently doesn't have a rendering on it. And the reason that was not included is because these signs will be required to be posted at the beginning of a process. And so the design may change through the process. Um, but if the commission thinks it's important to, to have a rendering um, on, on these signs, um, we'd like to hear that feedback. The only thing is it's not something we would require an applicant to change if the design of the building was changed through the process.
All right. Thank you for that. Yeah. So, um, in relation to that specific sign, I do think that rendering, especially for tier three, uh, tier two projects should be a requirement. We should mandate that. Um, because, um, as Margaret has pointed out, that the picture, you know, will speak thousands of words. So having that larger in a proportion to all of the other information would be extremely beneficial because again, as I, um, just my opinion, but I feel like if people are driving in a car, they will notice the image. They will not be able to read the letters, even if they are larger. Um, they, they just not going to have time for that. But if a pedestrian walks by, having smaller letters in relationship to the image, um, is accessible to the pedestrian. So, um, I still have a strong feeling that, um, some of our signs do have more of a cluttered information and simplifying. Um, perhaps, you know, sticking away some of the wording and simplifying the information and, um, I, I kind of like going back and forth with that because I do agree with Jim that like it could save staff's time to respond to um, the, uh, to all of the people who are calling and asking the information of the, about the project. But I feel like the information should be more visual rather than the words. So it doesn't clutter the sign, that the sign is more simplified and that it's more accessible to, um, people who are walking as well as driving. The other comment that I had that is a little bit more generic is that uh, perhaps not the signs themselves, but I do feel like, um, whether it's through the QR code or through our website, that we should have information on multiple languages that are aligned with the Corte Madero census. Um, I don't know how relevant it is, but perhaps Spanish and Mandarin, um, that's the ones, like top ones that come to my head that are typical for the Bay Area, um, to have as a secondary translation for the signs. So that it's accessible to, um, all of the people in our community.
Commissioner Boshier, if I could speak to the translation and interpretation question, the, um, most barrier jurisdictions have policies based on census data, as you noted. And, um, and school districts as well. And I believe the threshold is generally, um, when you have more than 30% of, uh, language spoken, that's when it really triggers the need for translation. And we have about, um, I think it's close to 10 or 11% that speak Spanish. And then there's, um, maybe three or 4% that speak, um, an Asian language. So we haven't really needed to do that in the past and, and we are, um, you know, online, people can, um, translate things and we are going to be working on a website update to make it easier, um, also in line with ADA. But, um, so I, I just coming from other jurisdictions where we did do translation and, and interpretation. I think our population just, we don't have the percentages to really warrant that level of effort because it is very expensive and, um, very time consuming to do. So perhaps sometime in the future, we may have to do that, but not at this point.
Thank you for that explanation.
Margaret?
I, I have no, uh, real things that need to be added here. I think we've talked about a lot of them. But I, I would trust that the staff could pick and choose what, what would be good information to put on signs. And I have confidence that they would, uh, would do that.
Okay. And I agree with the rendering. I think the renderings always help out a lot. Um, I always make it a policy when I do a planning presentation to actually have the neighboring buildings in the rendering to get some scale. But always help me out. But I don't think that, I think if you just have the rendering and you have the building with the story polls, it should tell enough story to get the point across.
So one question on the rendering would be, would a street level elevation be adequate? For example, that earlier meeting tonight where she doesn't do 3D, she's doing hand drawings. So as a substitute for a, a rendering, would a elevation be acceptable?
On the, on the, um, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good comment, right? If someone's not doing. It could be a requirement as, I guess that's, or would you rather see a rendering? I mean,
This was
Something major?
This example on screen was for a project that, um, you guys reviewed in April and they didn't have, I believe, maybe they did have renderings, but we included these. It, this was the public notice, more or less. This was the information, obviously it was a different format that we mailed out. Um, but these were the photos that I guess something might look like this if it wasn't a rendering, just to consider for your thoughts.
I think it has to be, almost be a major project to require a rendering. It's like some of these smaller things.
Tier three, single family. Major modifications to a single family. That would have, that would have been like what we just saw earlier.
No, I was looking at this one here going like, would it require a rendering there? Yeah, I like renderings. I, you know, I think most firms now are doing renderings. I think we're we're coming to the end of, like, I don't do renderings. I have someone else do them. So I, I think that, you know, our tier, uh, our level of professionals are starting to retire or they have people that do them or they, you know, have consultant to do it. And so I don't know if, if that's something, uh, they're starting to get a lot more affordable if, if that's a requirement in some of that. It definitely give you a better perspective from the street because an elevation, it's got a steep roof, looks like it's giant. You know, if you're trying to sell your community on a, a small project and, or your neighbors, you know, seeing elevation sometimes scares people, in my opinion. Want to move on to question four? All right. Valerie, I'll start with you again.
All right. Thank you. Uh, let me go back to where my notes are. All right. So, um, I think we talked about, um, just, I briefly noted about the 500 uh, mile radius recommendation. And I believe that Martha has replied to that one. Um, I still feel like, you know, larger the projects, more radius, more people engaged is more beneficial uh, for everyone. So if we can somehow change it in our requirements, that would be great. Uh, specifically for the tier two and tier three projects. Um, my other comment was, um, is to have a way to require that the signs be oriented always to the street, uh, to the frontage, that they're unobstructed to landscaping. But I believe that staff already is doing a really good job of placing them in a good ways. Um, and the other comment in terms of where else and how we could get the public engaged. I'm always struggling with our website just of, again, of how difficult it is to find the hidden information within it. And specifically in our staff report, uh, on the attachment two, um, where we have the website page example of where we have the active projects and, and then it showcases the 240 Tamil Vista Boulevard. I literally counted, it takes six different clicks, six different chapters of when we get to the active projects. To me, it's just, it's just so much. And I wonder if we can get almost like hot links every single time when we have a big project going on that they're, um, highlighted on the website. So that it's easy one click type of thing that people can go and check. Whether it's just takes us to the active projects and then it lists like multiple projects there and then people can choose which project they want to have in information. But going and kind of getting the information from our website, finding that active projects button is just a nightmare. Um, I, I know where they are and they constantly struggle with that. So that I cannot even imagine for people who are not uh, constantly going through our website and knowing where to find the information. So again, hot links would be extremely help, helpful. Um, and then, um, and then I talked already about the town hall display. So having something on the outside, perhaps maybe in the fence that is temporarily installed on the large active projects that are tier two projects would be also helpful to get public engagement. That's, that's all.
Oh, no.
Um, I don't know what the rules are for, uh, next door. But I've never noticed any information about any projects that we've done in Corte Madera on next door.
We send out, um, I think generally various posts, but I know especially when we publish, uh, an agenda, it gets posted on next door. Um, so we, for this meeting, it said, hey, this, here's the agenda. How, here's the online packet. Um, and I think it was used, Martha might be able to say about 240 Tamil Vista and, um, how often it was posted on for that. Uh, but it is in our repertoire of social medias. I believe Facebook, I don't know what other social medias.
How often does it get posted when we post, when we get our packets or does it get posted like the day, the night before also? Like, could we do something like that? Because
Said when the packets are published, um, which is typically like a, a Friday before a meeting. But for larger projects, you know, for the 240 Tamil Vista, we probably did six to 10 posts whenever there was a, a community meeting or an upcoming meeting or. a community meeting or an upcoming meeting or.
I don't know why I don't see it, but.
Yeah, we do both Facebook and next door.
Okay, that's good. The other thing that I was thinking of is every week I get the intergenerational newsletter. And maybe, I don't think everything has to be posted there, but if there's a particularly big deal kind of thing like 240, that would have been something that, you know, affects everybody. Or if there's some kind of posting for, I don't know, something that would affect some kind, maybe they would let you post one or two lines about something, even if it isn't intergenerational. It's just a way of reaching another audience. I actually think the town does a very good job of of making sure that people have information. I mean, there's always ways you can do more and better and bigger. But I think at this point, the town does a very good job of it.
I guess I have a question or suggestion that may be a little off the wall, but for major town events, there's often a a large poster at the exit from town center on not Tam Vista there, it's.
Which one? Ages?
You know, like touch trucks and Fourth of July and all those things. So for tier two projects, that would get extremely high visibility. Now, I think that most signs must be on town property. So I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but if you want to increase visibility, you're going to get a lot more visibility.
Yeah, those signs are all on town property. I think there's maybe six of them and there's a process by which the town council approves signs to be posted. But we did use that for the housing element to promote the workshop series and pop up events. And it was a very effective way to to reach people. So that's a great suggestion.
I went to say one more thing.
Sure.
Did I interrupt you, Dan?
Are you greenlighted?
Yeah. I just want to remind you not to forget, don't forget East Corte Madera. We're off in the other side of the tracks. And there's the fire station there, could be posted, Nugget Market. You know, people go by. And don't forget us.
And I think there is one of those signs kind of on Redwood in San Clemente.
Yeah.
At our posting location there. So you might have seen that.
Are we only required to put a newspaper ad out for tier one? Do we ever do them for major design review on tier two?
Yeah. So legal postings are required. And you can do it in lieu of sending a notice when there's a thousand residents. So we, it's done for a zoning code amendment that applies to the entire community. And then when you, when you post a legal notice, you don't have to send the mail, the mailing notice. So it's only done for for the tier ones.
And that's like in the ads, right? Because you have to search for that. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not highly visible. And I'm just like as a, as a tool.
On the news story.
Believe that you're referring to the publication part of the noticing.
Correct.
Which I'm sure all of us read diligently every morning.
Exactly.
That is a
Can't have my coffee without it.
Still statutorily required means writing notice.
And we get visibility like when, it's always like after, the Marin IJ I'm just thinking about because I know a lot of people read that, but it's usually after, after something's been approved, it it gets written about. But I know a lot of people do read that that might not be online. I like the idea of actually reminding people of a, of a project that is either a tier, tier two or tier three project, maybe at the posting and then maybe the the day before the the hearing. And I don't know if that's a lot of work or not. It seems like if you have it, it would be nice to get, because a lot of people that are next door, that it's, it's like a daily thing. They're just, they go there, they get their notice and then that's what they're going to do. They're gonna probably not going to remember something from two weeks ago unless they put it on their calendar. But it might be a topic of conversation at the coffee shop if someone read about it that day and then they make plans to come the following day, like maybe, you know, post it on Monday that we have a hearing on Tuesday, please come and join us. I think that might be a very kind of good idea on some of the tier two and tier three projects. At this point, if, I do want to bring it up to general questions.
Okay.
And please go ahead, Daniel.
Okay. This is sort of related. The table refers to on tier three and tier four, major variance and minor variance. Are those specific zoning definitions?
Not defined in in the code. Let me, actually, let me double check. The the minor variances are are staff level variances. And then major variance obviously goes to the planning commission. We don't process a lot of variances in in general. Check what the code says. You have any other questions while we look that up?
Yeah. So related question is, your description of tier three says refers to substantial alterations to single family residences and major modifications to commercial buildings. So how do we define substantial and major?
So generally, when we're looking at if a, in addition goes to the, can be processed at staff level or planning commission, we have guidelines that we use. So any new story always goes to the planning commission. And then if the size exceeds a certain percentage of the existing square footage, then those projects, if it's more than 50%, then those projects also go to the the planning commission. So we're looking at percentage of increase and then also if it's a new story.
Oh, good. So there are some things you can fall back on to determine that. Good. The last thing is so how would something like 800 Corte Madera Avenue, which is, doesn't fit into any of the tier three categories. But it is a major variance. So would you require a sign and where would the sign go?
So that would have required the the smaller onsite sign be, that would have been required to be posted 14 days prior to the hearing. For a project like that, I think we would have required it for sure down at Alta Terrace because that's the more visible location. But, you know, we would evaluate if multiple signs should be required since there's multiple frontages. So possibly would would have been required at the top too.
Great, thanks.
Valerie, do you have any general questions that weren't addressed or comments that you'd like to say?
No, I think all of my questions and comments were addressed through the four focused questions.
Thank you. Margaret?
I don't. I don't think I have anything else. I think this is as I said before, I think it's a good idea and I think the town does a very good job and anything extra that gets done for more notice would be terrific.
Great. Can we provide anything else to staff on this item?
May I recommend that you open it up to public comment, just in case there's somebody who's still with us?
Absolutely. Thank you. Like to open this up to public comment. You have three minutes. If you would like to speak on this item, you have three minutes to do so.
No one is online and no emails to public comment.
Okay, great. I think we have some meeting minutes to approve. We have any comments on any, does anybody want to pull anything from the meeting minutes and discuss it or can we move forward? Do I have a motion to approve both sets of meeting minutes from April 8th and April 22nd? Oh, and May 13?
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a? Who usually vote for that? I think we, no, I'll say aye.
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 Reports. So I, I have June 17th, I think. Does anybody have any thing prior to June 17th on the report out on town council? Can't remember. I think I'm the so I'll restart. See, we, I attended the the June 6th, I mean, sorry, the June 17th town council meeting and we had a public comment regarding vibrancy of Corte Madera concerning kind of asking us to be more proactive and helping some of the businesses move forward and and not being restrictors, is what they said. And we had a presentation to honor Bob Bundy, who we, some of us have served with up here and he got a lifetime achievement award. Been serving for almost 50 years. I think it's been super important and great. On the consent calendar, Jim Andrews is the second meeting I had him pull. He had pulled the meeting minutes and just asked for more detail in the meeting minutes. And would like to see some of the comments and recommendations be I don't know, followed up on, I guess. I think you guys are working on that. And then we had a public hearing to review the operating budget. So I don't know why I get these. I think I've had it four years in a row. But we do have a, we do have a new finance director, Chris Petlock. And I think the the town council would try to have, would like to have a goal of tying that budget back to the work plan and review it every six months, which is a great thing. As far as the budget goes, some of the forecasts were pretty conservative over the next two years based on where we're at with interest rates and the political landscape. Even some of the, they're estimating that maybe some of the hotel tax, the TOT tax might, might go down just based on some of the occupancy and for us losing Macy's, we're going to lose some tax money. Chris will be working on cleaning up and consolidating some of the small little funds into maybe budget items with line items. And they forecasted our expenses to kind of increase by about 4% a year, which is basically our inflationary rate. Most of our expenses are salaries and benefits and capital improvement projects. If you haven't heard, we've moved reserve fund from 20% to 30, to 25, 20% to 25%. And one of the, something that Chris really wants to work on is to dig into our recreation fund. There's a lot of different project, projects that they'd like to try to figure out how we can make them happen for our Parks and Recs team. And then there were some comments, most of them from the council members were just concerns about where we're at economically and 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 what the forecasting was and Mayor Avasio would really like to have money set aside for community type projects and mentioned the possibility of longer term planning with consultants, which I would love for you guys to get budget for. So you could, would help you guys out in some of the longer term goals that you guys have on the planning side. And I think there was an adoption of new positions at the town. I don't know if you guys had rechanged, but there's principal planner. And we also have looking to hire a deputy director of the sanitary district, which is pretty much going to take over a lot of the, probably 80 to 90% of the sanitary district's projects. And I think that there was very minor slight increases in the salary tiers for the planners. And there was some talk about reimbursement for the EV charging for staff. And it went to the sanitary district and there was a discussions regarding the new parallel main, the redundant waistline, which is fantastic. Because we don't have one. If it breaks, we don't have any sewer. So, you know, that got approved. So it's fantastic that that's going to move forward and there's a new valve that, that a major valve that's getting replaced. It's very complicated. And the paradise pump. So that's it for me. We have another commissioner.
July 1. Before that. That's it?
That's it.
Okay, July 1. There were basically three items, two item public hearings and one business item. The 5A was discussion of changes in the ordinance for EV charging stations. Regulating and updating the fee schedule. There are five at town hall. Three are for town vehicles, two for the public. A town park has two. And there may be, you know, more in the planning stages. So there was confirmation of the rate, which is 42 cents a kilowatt hour. And there was interest in allowing residents who don't have charging at home to be able to park their vehicle and charge overnight. But there's, they approved an overstay fee. After four hours and 15 minutes, you get charged a dollar a minute, up to $50 for keeping your car on a charging station when you're not charging. And there was concern that apparently the software, the company software that we're using to manage this whole system can't change it so that if you're parked overnight, you don't get charged that overcharge. And so apparently they're going to explore whether they can make this changes to their software to allow that. But in the meantime, people won't be able to be parked there, charged overnight. So that passed. Let's see. The second item, 5B was consideration adoption of the budget. And that, since they already had reviewed the budget in the meeting that you discussed, that was fairly straightforward. I thought it was interesting, 47% of the budget goes to police and fire. So there's not a lot of, and that was just recently negotiated. So there's not a lot of flexibility there. And the town budget passed. And then the business item was to allow the town to waive competitive bidding as we review the contract with Mill Valley Refuse. There was a lot of discussion about about the various services they might provide and the negotiation that has been going on with the town. And we have a R3 consulting group on our side of the negotiation. So they agreed to one new curbside cleanup collection annually, increasing the town fee. From 9,000 to 12,000, that's like an administrative fee the town pays. Fire prevention support, they're going to have five 40 yard debris boxes annually, increase the portable, number of portable toilets the town can use. There'll be a detailed rate review after the first two years. Expanding the reporting requirements, allow interest expense on capital expenditures. It was interesting. They say typical refuse truck last has to be replaced every 10 years. And if they can't recap the interest on their loans, then they're going to be reluctant to do the capital expenses. So that town agreed to that. I won't go into it's very complicated about the operating margin and how they calculate their profit. I won't go into, it's very complicated about the operating margin and how they calculate their profit. But they seem to be on track for that, and so the council approved the town manager to continue negotiations and bring back a contract to town council. And I, that's all the notes I have.
Thank you very much. Amy, do you have anything that you'd like to report out on?
Yes, well, first off, let me just note that this is likely Commissioner Chair Rizzo's last meeting, because he is stepping down from the commission. And thankfully, you were able to help us tonight by chairing the meeting, so we really appreciate that. And we do have a, a new application for planning commission, who will be interviewed by the council and hopefully appointed on August 5th. So that will happen before our next meeting, because we do plan on canceling the next meeting in July. And I will email you all. Also, we want to thank Jim for his time and the, on the commission. So we're going to try to find a date that works to do something formal with the commission, but also something informal. So I'll be checking with you all by email, just to see what dates might work.
Thank you. I guess before I adjourn, I just want to say I'm honored and, and humbled to serve with all the commissioners and learn a lot from each one of you. And, and I got a master's degree in, in small-town government from, from the team. And, I mean, I can't say, I'm, I think we've got the best planning team out there. And I want to thank you very much, and for all the time that Anne and Amy spend on the phone, and Martha, geez, I mean, how many times do I call you every week? And the knowledge Tracy brings to the table, I just want to thank everybody, appreciate it. So with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, just, the other thing is RJ, the town engineer has resigned.
Oh.
And there was a lot of, yeah. And there was a lot of, of course, wonderful comments about all his accomplishments, but I, sorry, I forgot that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now you can return.
I just had a couple other things, too. Another thing that I'll email out, but the, this is related to our arena and our housing element, but the state notified us that we are one of 40 jurisdictions that is actually meeting our housing allocation. It's based on last cycle, but that means we're not going to be subject to some of the ministerial housing laws the state has. So we're in a very small group that does not have to adhere to those rules, such as SB 35, that's something that you're familiar with. So I'll send out an email with a little more detail about that. And then also, 800 Cora Madera Ave, that application was appealed to the council. So that will be heard on April 5th by the council. And.
April 5th?
Did I say, August 5th? Yes.
Thank you.
And just a reminder to the commission that anytime something's appealed, there's always a chance that it could come back to you, so continue to remain neutral. Any conversations you have, please log those, because they are something that you would have to disclose. So just continue to be mindful of that as you would, as something was coming before you newly. And you mentioned Bob Bundy's resolution, I'm glad you did, I wanted to mention that as well. And I think, I think that's it. Yeah.
Amy, didn't we win also an award for our budget or something? There was something that I was, that was, like, something about our, I thought we won some kind of, we're one of the, only a few towns.
I think so, but it's, it's very rare to have such a budget as we have.
And there's something about it, I can't remember who told me, but.
Yeah.
I thought there was something that.
Not that I know of, but if I find out, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Good.
So is the July 22nd still scheduled?
No, we're going to be canceling the next meeting in July, and we may have a meeting August 12th, August 12th. So we'll let you know as soon as we can if that meeting will be held.
With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.